A second to order if I could have an acceptance of the agenda, please.
The move.
Second?
Motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna be running with three of us tonight, so I think we can handle everything that happens. Uh, let's see, are there any walk-ins this evening? You don't have any walk-ins? Business they need to take care of? Okay. Tricia's ready, I'll move on to the report. Any town administrator?
Um, I'll be very brief since I just returned today, but I have met with Mr. Bangert, who is the acting town administrator, to catch up on things that have happened over the past few weeks. He's done a lot of work around the public safety complex and starting to educate folks about that project and why it's needed and the current conduction, conditions of the existing fire and police facilities, and met with the chairman of the Public Facilities Master Plan Committee relative to doing that. We're out for advertisement for the local inspector position, which is building inspector, approved at town meeting, and the coastal resources officer position, and I hope to be making a decision within the next week or two about the Board of Health Director. So, very grateful to Jennifer Sullivan, who's working part-time for us, and we continue to have some new staff and getting them apacimated, including in your office and in other departments. The library project is moving as quickly as it can, we're out to bid for architectural design services for that. At your next meeting you'll be awarding hopefully the bid for wifi in the harbor, which is approved at town meeting a year ago. We opened bids for that last week, and we also opened bids for an assessment center for lieutenant promotional in the police department. We have two firefighters who just graduated from the fire academy, so our personnel issues, I think, really continue to dominate a lot of what we're doing. I wanna thank Lorraine and Sheila and Michelle and Mr. Bangert for filling in the last two weeks while I was out, keeping things going. Mr. Bangert ended up working a lot more than I think he or may have anticipated, but it was needed, and I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay. I too would like to thank everyone for chipping in, doing extra work while you're out. People watched us a couple of weeks ago, we're all holding our tablets, trying to hold 'em and read 'em, well, Al Bangert, these awesome blocks, and I think you ought to pat him, so thanks for doing that today. All right, anything else, guys? Move on, okay? Next in the discussion, vote for some one-day liquor licenses we have at, it looks to me, at the waterfront club, the Young's Boatyard. What we're approving are the caterers that we have approved in the past, and we're just, oh, actually, it's the Marine Park Center as well as the G A R Hall.
One for G A R.
Yes, some of both in there, but I believe every one of them is a caterer that we've approved in the past. So what we have is, starting with May 31st, and it looks to be through June 2nd. Anyone in the audience have any comments, questions? We don't really require that these caterers come here, because, like I said, they have been here in the past. So, the board have any questions or comments? If not, accept the motion for these one-day licenses.
Yeah, no, just that the, these are, caterers are for events that people have sought to, to, what do you call it, lease, the maritime center and the gar, and of course, in order to do so, they need caterers to do it. It's basically private functions that people are looking to do.
Thank you.
Motion, a?
Please.
Move to grant Alan McKenzie catering a one-day liquor license for Cituate Maritime Center, May 31st, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Second?
A motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Front Street Gourmet, one-day liquor license for Cituate Maritime Center, June 6th, from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM, June 8th, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and June 28th, from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
A motion, a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Silent Chef, a one-day liquor license for Cituate Maritime Center, June 7th, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
And a motion, a second, John, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Last but not least, hospital hostess, June 21st, G A R Hall, 6:00 PM to 10:30 PM.
Second.
Okay, motion, a second?
Aye.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
What was the date on June 21st? On my hard copy, on my hard copy, I have the Front Street Gourmet, would like June 28th, at the Maritime Center, from 2:00 to 8:00.
Yeah, we just lumped up.
Oh, yes.
All right, was that, was that done?
When I, when I read this, yes.
All the dates were Front Street Gourmet.
That's on, that's there.
Or the motion that you read.
Okay, good, all right, good, I see that. Okay, so we've covered everything, I don't wanna leave anybody out.
Good.
Okay, all right, okay, great. Now, moving on to the same idea, a blanket beer and wine license for a one-day license to the G A R Hall, looks to be for, six of them, for the year 2014. Okay? Who is this?
So I'm wondering, um, Ja- Jackie Colari?
Yeah, she's the one who actually manages the G A R Hall, so what we're doing in essence is, they apparently have six events, and instead of having them come in, for each event, we're giving her a blanket.
So it's what we used to do for when, before the town managed the Maritime Center and the foundation did, we give them blanket ones, so they have them in advance, so if they book something two weeks from now and you're not meeting, they still have the opportunity to have the event.
Okay. You comfortable with that?
I'm fine with that.
A motion, please?
Motion, I'll move to grant the G A R Hall, six blanket, one-day beer and wine licenses.
Second?
I have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Moving on to a hawker's peddler's license. All right. I understand this is a young entrepreneur that wants to start his own business, and I'll give you the floor in just, just one second, so you've been across the hall and spoken to the secretary to find out the rules and regulations, pretty familiar with that sort of stuff, and I just found out tonight that you just have to go before the Board of Health to get their stamp of approval, so the only thing we're gonna change in our motion, guys, is just contingent on their vote, and obviously, she'll look for the, you know, public safeties sort of things, all right?
And so, thank you for taking the time.
Would you introduce yourself and tell us the name of your company and some free advertising?
My name is E J Colain, and I'm at Rising South, I'm at Trinity College, and originally I started this, trying to start a hot dog stand in Cituate, because it provides a great deal of experience of how to run a business, and I wouldn't be doing it if I didn't think I could make money as a college student, looking to pay off school and all that type of stuff. And I live in Cohasset, however, my family is on a summer home in Cituate on Marion Road since 1962, so we spend a lot of our summers here, and I also work at Edward Jones in Cituate for Deborah Flanagan and James Covnarow, and I'm really just interested in learning how to start a business and what it takes and all the procedures such as this one, to go through to start a business, and thank you for your time.
All right, any, I, before I open up to the board, any, is your idea to stay at a certain beach?
Um, we're looking to start at Egypt Beach and Peggity Beach, because I believe those are the, you know, very popular beaches, and I know the lighthouse already has a hot dog stand, I don't wanna go somewhere where someone else has already set up, and I think those are two areas where there hasn't been a lot of people that have done this type of thing, and as well as the baseball field, specifically Green Bush, because I know in Florence Field and Cohasset, there was a stand set up, or a building rather, that has grown over the years and has been very successful, and I think that at Green Bush, there could be, because there's so many baseball games there, all around, you know, multiple towns, and I think that would be also my ideal place to set up.
I was having a brief conversation with our secretary, Lorraine, and I remember a license, you know, granting these licenses in the past, and we were trying to put, I had the other, she was looking back into the, um, the license renewals, and apparently, some have not renewed, if I'm not mistaken or correct.
Correct.
So, he could go to ball fields just as well as the beaches.
Yes, those spots are available.
That's great. How'd you get your hot dog cart?
Um, I ordered mine.
Yeah? Good, good. I heard about that, that's great. That's all I have for right now, I'll open up to you guys.
I just, actually, you answered my question, I was gonna ask, not that, we obviously would love to have you in Cituate, but I was just curious as why Cituate, not Cohasset, but you already answered the question, so, um, so, yeah, I think, I think Egypt is a good fit, because there's nothing around that area, really, you know? But, that's really all I have.
Mine, I don't know if there's a store down there.
Not really anymore, yeah, mine, but he had mentioned, you know, Peggity.
Yourself a tie calendar, because sometimes the beach disappears at high tide, so work around that.
And then I have, just to add to my file, sales on, sale tax on meals and beverages registration.
All right, good.
Just to add to my file.
Sam will get happy.
So how many do we have, Lorraine, if you are aware?
We only have one other hot dog stand in Cituate, and that's at the lighthouse.
That's the one, they renewed, okay.
And then we have a dog's lemonade stand, at various locations.
Okay.
Mostly down by, we have the Marine.
So, the, the one by the lighthouse, is that the one that you'll see sometimes over by the old Pier 44 parking lot?
No, that was a different one, that was.
That's the one I was thinking about.
Yeah, Michael Healy, and I don't think he renewed.
No.
No, and then you had one in Homarock for a couple of years, and they didn't renew.
Right, that was similar, you know, mother with the children, right?
Well, I know the, I don't have the benefit of Mr. Vignani being here, because I know the Little League field at Green Bush, I think they sell, on occasion, sodas and candy, so there may be a direct competition there, that's, that's one downside, so I'm reluctant to say go down there right now. I understand why, because it makes sense to be able to sell, not just there, but also on the Roach Field, because when they have games, it's a good location, there's nothing around there.
But, talk to them, go, go talk to them first, because I think.
Cituate Little League.
Right.
I think that one might, would be my first suggestion, because I'm not inclined to say go down to Green Bush. I certainly think, I've, I've always felt that Roach Field would be a good location, and there's not one at that. Having said that, though, I guess the question is, in the past, our rule has been, we've given somebody one location. Obviously, right now, we only have one other, so I don't know how the board feels, whether we give two locations, Egypt and Peggity, but I would only say under the caveat that that may not be the case next year, if other people are looking for positions or for locations. So, I guess, I have no issues, you know, if you have the opportunity, be at one location, and then maybe the next day at another, but I only forewarn you that next year, that probably won't, might not be the same, if you come back again. But I think it's a great opportunity, and I'm sure, beside, I know this sounds kinda silly when I'm gonna ask you, but I know the board has asked it in the past, and neither of my two brothers are here tonight, who'll probably be asking the question, aside from hot dogs, are you selling like candy and sodas and things like that, that complement it?
Sodas and then the buns, obviously, and then water buns.
All right. I only say that because there is the policy that we have, that you should be aware of, that you can't sell within certain amount of distance from stores, okay? And I just only say that because the stores, we wanna be aware of, but the two locations you're looking for don't have them, and I certainly support you on them, okay?
So we're gonna just limit them to two locations?
I would say probably, yeah, at this point.
Do you wanna do that on the motion? Do you wanna?
I suppose we should, I don't know if I'm in favor, but I mean, he's the only one that's come forward, you know? You know, he can stay busy, but, all right, we'll, we'll stop.
Well, you know, I guess, I, I'm happy to discuss it, I only say it because I'm saying.
What if, what if someone, what if there isn't anyone else that comes forward? And he could hit the beaches in the morning and afternoon?
Could we expand it at that point? Could we expand it at that point?
And he goes to the ball fields, if there's games.
I, I have no problems with, I'm only saying that, I know the ball field's probably.
I tend to agree with John, Sean, I think the Little League does its own booster.
Oh, yes, right, no, I said, that's why I suggested to talk to them first, before he shows up with his cart, for sure.
Yeah.
You know, because you want the blessing of them, too, it's really.
I could speak with them and then come back for the next meeting, that would work better.
I would rather give you an opportunity between now and the next meeting to at least be able to sell some hot dogs, but at least give you a chance to talk to Little League, because they may say yea or nay.
Yes.
But I, I guess, as I say to you, I mean, I'm happy to say, if you wanna move, hot dog, we'll travel, then, you know, I'm, I'm not adverse to it, I'm just saying that somebody may come in in a month, and then we're gonna have, you're all over the place, then what do we, then a free for all?
Right, and we'll just.
I don't know, that's all I'm saying.
You mentioned a couple of locations, maybe we'll stop there, and then you can always come back to us in a month, if, if, and we, or, you know, contact Lorraine and see if there's any others, and if there hasn't been any others, and you wanna expand, then come back in, all right?
Thanks.
That'd be great.
Egypt and Peggity, right off the bat, I mean.
Yeah, you'll sell a lot.
Okay, well, before we make a motion, I wanna wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
If I see ya, I'll be stopping.
On a motion?
Please.
I'll move to grant a hawker peddler's license to wicked, wine or hot dog?
Wieners.
Wieners, okay. Stand at the Egypt Beach and Peggity Beach locations.
I have a motion, have a second?
Second.
I think I need to put.
Conditional on your approval.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And condition for the, for the, I guess it's for a year, right? That's what this is for, the license was.
It's not approval by the board.
Okay, but a condition that you obtain Board of Health approval. Second?
Six.
I have a motion, a second, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Best of luck to you, okay?
Good luck. Okay? Next is a common vic license, we have a chain of ownership for the Sandhills General Store, Thornton's, Flynn's, I think we're all familiar with that store.
How are you?
Kinda came as a little bit of a surprise, you were buying the store.
Good evening, my name is, my name is Dan McAdam, this is where we make purchasing the Sandhills Store, here's my, for a common vics license, and yeah, it was, this was something that was kind of ongoing, I know they were in by for sort of other reasons, but it's been going on. We almost purchased it last summer, but Mike and Ashley ended up taking it over then. But they had contacted me last, it was past January, they knew I was interested back then, they just, they didn't have the capital to make it work, they couldn't bring in, they couldn't put any product on the shelf.
Okay.
So, so, we, they contacted me, worked something out, and we're gonna take it over. We live right across the street, 157 Turnover, store is at 160, so we kinda know the history of the store, and see how it, when it was running, but it was, it was, it was a very handy store for the neighborhood, you know, talking with the neighbors. There was talk, last summer, when it, it fell apart, the prior owner was gonna leave, there was talk that if the owner of the building couldn't find somebody for the store, they were thinking about making it condos, and the neighborhood down there, we didn't want that. We want a store there, we need a store there, it's very handy. We needed a filled store, though, that was the fault, so, I've been investing a bunch of capital in there, we're gonna fill it up. We had a big marketing weekend, we got big flyers going on, three mile radius, about 6,000 homes we hit, letting them know the store's back, and what it's gonna have, it's gonna have everything, it's gonna be a full store. The manager has worked there on and off for about 18 years, Candy Scan, and she's very well-known, very well-liked, throughout the Board of Health Department here, and a lot, she's well-known throughout the town, and people are really happy, but she's gonna be back managing full-time, my work's gonna be there, and I'll be in and out stocking shelves, so, making a complete circle, like we did when they came out of high school. So, but it is, we're gonna try to fill it with everything. We kinda had like a soft grand opening the weekend, along with Mike and Ashley, they were there, but we filled the store, and the turnout was tremendous, and everybody's really excited and the neighborhood that it's gonna be a filled store. Ice cream window, the ice cream window, the other night, was lying down the street, there were three people making ice cream. We're gonna have the full belly, meats to buy, all kinds of groceries, supplies, cleaning supplies, tools, everything that the general store has, so it's basically a one, one store to go with for the people in that area. So they're really, really excited about it, and it basically turned out to be a marathon meet and greet, with this, 17 hours from 6:00 to 10:00 for three days, because people wanna know who the owners were, they wanted to thank us for what you did to the store. They kinda think it fell out of the sky overnight, but they kinda changed it, I got, got it painted inside and out in one day, had all the trucks and groceries, and it was then brought in and scheduled to bring in at a certain time, so we didn't obstruct its traffic and stuff, and we packed the store, so people, they, they couldn't believe they were there yesterday, there's nothing here now, it's a full store with everything, so everybody was really excited, all the members. We put chairs and tables outside, people sitting down, it was nice to see, you know, fathers and daughters sitting outside having ice cream, smiles on their face, so there was a lot of excitement, there was, it was like, I was very surprised, so, well, so that's what we're here for, and that's who we are.
My only question was the hours.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
You know, it doesn't really make any difference to me, I was just kinda curious, and, you know.
Well, it's what, you know, we've, we're kinda basing things on what the neighborhood wants, we're trying to find out what they'd like us to bring into the store, we're covering south, we've talked to people, the manager's, like I said, Jamie, he's been there for many years, she kinda knows what the store needs with us, we've asked, we're asking, and just doing a lot of talking over the weekend, what people want, so we're kinda gonna base it on that, and then obviously, whatever the, the rules are, but it was pretty much 6:00 to 10:00 in the peak months, and then weekends at 7:00, we open at 7:00, I think 7:00 to 9:00, I believe is what the hours were, and then the winters, we'll, we'll see how that goes, we'll have some, we'll tweak the hours in the winters accordingly.
Okay. John?
No, I just, the hours, you answered the question, actually, yeah. So on the weekends, at 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM?
7:00, I believe, to 9:00.
It's 6:30 in the morning till 9:00 during the week, and at the weekend, it's.
It's 10:00.
7:00 to 9:30.
Oh, 9:30, okay.
But then it's gonna, I mean, 7:00 to 9:00.
Okay.
But then the, in the season.
Gotcha.
It's probably gonna be later.
Right, okay, all right.
Tweaking that to see how it goes, I'm gonna just kinda do some, you know, little studies, see when the, check the tapes, see when things are being sold, late hours, if nothing's sold, it goes up.
Right, good, I don't have any further questions.
No.
It sounds great, and once again, good luck, I wish you the best.
Yeah, I know, it's gonna work out, I think, but, a lot of interest, a lot of interest, a lot of happy people down there in that area, they made a lot of friends on the way down, keep it right.
Good. You'll be putting some hours in, I can guarantee you that. Can I have a motion?
Sure, I'll move to grant a common vicular license to Sandhills General Store LLC. Do we need, I assume we need the hours, though, right?
I don't think in a common vic.
No, not in common vic.
Okay, all right.
Just the license.
Are there any, are there any hours? Is there any limits on how clearly can open or a late can stay open to, is there any?
No, not, not if you have a liquor license, don't have a liquor license attached to it, so you're good.
Great, a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck. Good luck, folks, thank you.
Next is a discussion and vote for an emergency sewer tie-in, I just see one of our members from the Board of Health come in. Steve, you expecting anyone else, or the?
No, John, it's gonna be right now.
Okay, I was looking ahead, I don't know if we could jump.
Yes.
We're 10 minutes early, does that matter to you, Steve?
No.
Okay?
Yeah.
One second, see if we can just get to it.
It should be down in a second.
And after this agenda, items taken care of, you'll go to page 91.
Okay.
Just for a reference.
Thank you, sir.
If I have that, Steve.
Thank you, he's not gonna be here, so.
You wanna wait for Jennifer, Steve?
Yeah, good.
All right, okay.
I know we're a few minutes early.
All right. Does everyone know Steve P N Z on the Board of Health?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I would.
Steve, pleased to meet you.
Pleased to meet you.
Good to see you, Steve.
Oh, hey, buddy.
Good.
You guys know each other?
Oh, yeah. We go way back.
All right, that's, that's way early, Jennifer, so that's great, thank you, thank you for adjusting your schedule, so, an emergency sewer tie-in, I had a little discussion with our secretary earlier today, as well as like a local attorney, who's not here, but it kinda filled me in, and I, Steve, could you, well, our sewer main's on Merritt Lane, correct?
Yeah, it's sewer, it's on Merritt and it's on Main, and a lot of the ones on Park have gone through people's backyards via paper streets, but behind this house, the two people have aggravated the paper streets into their lots. So, we're a tight tank sewer, I mean, the soil is ridiculous.
It's pretty hard.
Neither, when it was there, they pumped it more than four times a year, you know, some backups and some overflows, there's nobody there now, but it's gotta have a system, some.
So the solution is, town sewer, or tight tank, and it will, end up in the same place, so.
Yeah, Phil discussed it with Dan Smith, and it essentially will be mostly in the right-of-way, with a small portion of asphalt disturbed to get to the manhole, if it goes that way.
So which way is it going, Jennifer, I'm sorry?
It's going towards Maple.
That's, that's fine.
So it's gonna go down, is it gonna go down Park, or is it gonna go through the paper, the?
It's gonna go, it's gonna go down and out, a, a.
Merritt?
A, no, it's gonna go down Park to Maple. See the little circle on Maple?
In the corner right here?
Yep.
That's the manhole, it'll connect to.
Okay. So it's, we're not gonna use the paper street at all?
Well, no, they, they incorporated it into the yard, that's why there's a solid line there.
There's two houses that were used.
Is that the continuation of Cituate Ave, that paper street, John?
Yeah, it's, it's, the park ave.
Right.
And, um, when Merritt was put in, I think they somehow.
You can see the four paper streets where the solid line has now come in?
Yep, no, I see, it looks like they somehow extinguished the easement or the roadway, I don't know how, but they did, and, or they did, I don't know if they do or not, but regardless, that's what, here, so, so what they're gonna do is they're gonna go down from number 14, Park Ave, go all the way down to the very end, where Maple Ave meets, where number two is, and that's the manhole.
Correct.
What are they, what type of material, what type of pipe are they gonna put down from that house to Maple?
Whatever that is in our, that's.
It's a sewage, STI 21, unfortunately.
The spaghetti line, it's a private line, it's gonna be their line. This is just, this is just going down a, a wrong slippery slope. These are private lines in a public way, I've said it once before. Can we make them put a six-inch line, eight-inch line? Did you say a developer bought this, and there's no Title V?
No, there is a Title V, it's failed.
Yeah.
Okay, but they bought it, but they bought it, the house changed hands?
March 31st.
So there was no Title V, they just bought it as is?
No, we made them do a Title V, because it's a sewer connect.
Wouldn't a bank make them do that, though, Jennifer?
No, if it was, if it was a bank, it depends on how they buy it, if they buy it as is, it's as is.
That's my point, yeah, that's my point.
I know where you're going with that, I know exactly your point.
Okay, we're gonna have spaghetti lines all over the place, then when we fill, we're gonna have a big mess, that's, that's my problem.
So Jennifer, or, or Steve, everything else around here is sewered, so is there?
With spaghetti lines.
There's only five houses on the whole lot.
I understand that, so why wasn't this house tied previous to the sewer, if the other dozen all around it have been tied in previously?
Cause there's much to run in the street.
So how, did all these other budding properties connect through an emergency tie-in or a spaghetti line?
Yes.
No, not all of them, I don't, some of them, I think, I think some of them connected before my time, um, and some, some, I think, did connect through the backyards where they could, when, uh, a couple of connections. And, um, I know, um-
Didn't one of them get connected through Shadwell?
Yeah, that's what it looks like, this one here, or one of these two, we had somebody come in on Park Ave, yeah, they did.
More than one, remember that new house that was built, and they didn't have a septic system, and they, they had to go into Shadwell? They had to go through the end of Shadwell and get easements and stuff like that.
Yeah.
It's a mess, Jennifer.
So, yeah, my concern is, is that if these are all spaghetti lines or tie-ins, then aren't going into a main and are all sort of, um, bushwhack through, and they're in, to, to Sean's question, and that they're all have small pipes, instead of a larger main, then it's really quite a matrix going on there in terms of flow.
And I, and I couldn't agree more with the soil sample that Steve has there, um, you know, and again, I think we've had this, you know, why wasn't this one of the priority districts, run the eight-inch main down there and connect it, you know, the, the houses that are on there do it right, and it's done, you know? That's, my, my problem is the liability down the road, that's my issue.
Well, they own it, they're responsible for it, that's the way the DP double knows, they made it, the, the deed restriction and all of that.
Twenty years from now, two homeowners later, someone might not have the money to fix it, then what do we do? The homeowner that owns it can't fix it, then what do we do? You know, they don't have the finances.
We can get down the house and make a move.
I just have a question.
It's not, it's not, whatever, go ahead.
My question is that the, the testing, and I was going through a lot of the documentation, many, many pages, but the, the house just changed ownership on March thirty-first, so the testing and stuff went on probably, what, in February, I mean, and, and it, obviously it failed, right? February into March, so it failed Title V.
It failed for, for several weeks.
Correct.
I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't just the soil, it also failed for pumping.
Right.
And it failed for ground.
I mean, obviously I know the neighborhood very well, but, um, it's been vacant for a period of time. Just curious as to, as to the-
That's the reason why the developer screwed it up.
Right.
How did the Board of Health, was there any, was it unanimous, or?
There was not, there was two, three.
No.
Two, two, one, two, two to one.
And the reasons for, I'm sorry, Sean.
No, no, we were gonna ask the same question.
The reasons for no tight tank?
I was gonna ask that question. Um, we discussed it, we, we certainly discussed it, um, but we had seen how all the other houses in their surrounding area were connected to sewer, and, you know, the way that, that we had put that, just grew down the end of the street to where that exists, over the manhole, there's, um, two on three of us, we, uh, we did approve it.
So in essence, then, if we're looking at, and I'm just looking, cause I, this is what I was trying to figure out, what the sewer made when, when I was preparing, now I understand, it's not in Park Ave. Basically, then what we're, we're suggesting to everybody else on Park Ave is that if they need a spaghetti line, they should be able to get it, that's what we're saying.
Well, if-
That's our precedent.
There's only one more house you're looking at, and that's the one that's right next to it.
Well, no, I'm, I'm, the ones across the street, there's one, two, three, potentially, three more, so we're looking at like, four more potentially, and then everybody gets sewed.
Well, what happens, John, is if this line is run, did Phil and Jennifer know this, if this line's run, alright, this guy spends the ten or fifteen thousand to run it, now, the neighbor across the street needs to tie in, so they make it, they, well, for a fee. So he's gonna, you know, they worked that up amongst themselves, and then he, cause that, believe it or not, a two-inch line is enough for a couple, two or three houses or something, Phil, I don't know, it all depends on-
The inch and a half line is good, three more, two more houses, so total of three houses, you know, in the inch and a half line.
Right.
And there are, the houses up towards Merritt are tied in by, by spaghetti lines also. They go directly to Merritt, I can show you on the sheet, these houses, that is a spaghetti line, that's a spaghetti line that goes up in here, and I do that also, that goes up to the manhole.
Turner, on Turner?
On Turner, uh, not Turner.
Merritt, Merritt turns, they don't, none of them go up to Shadwell?
Shadwell, yes, that one goes to Shadwell, like the, the easement through the slot, to, uh-
One from Shadwell.
Yeah, yep. So Maple is really the only one that has the main line running down?
That has a main line, this has a main line.
Okay, on development, okay.
Yeah.
What it, uh, you know, and I've always been dead against tight tanks, and when Tricia came in and I heard, I couldn't have disagreed more, you know, she's, in her previous towns, you know, thinks they work, I just think it's, you know, it's kind of, it's very unfortunate to have a tight tank. But in a case like this, think about it for a little bit, you know, if this house does go on a tight tank, okay, and maybe one or two others have to, and then when it's done right, and the town runs the main, they abandon their tight tanks. You know, how expensive is it for a tight tank, you know, is it the same cost as what it is for a spaghetti line?
Okay, a tight tank has to be designed for five days flow.
Okay.
Which, let's say, they conserve water, and they only pump it three times a month. It's probably gonna run them about six hundred bucks a pump, because it's such a big tank.
Probably a tight tank, you're talking about.
Say it's two thousand twenty-five hundred, depending on the bed rooms. So, then, six hundred times three times a month.
Jesus. That's pretty expensive, six hundred dollars, or, you know. Anyone else?
That's eighteen hundred a month is what you're looking.
This is slated to, to town sewer at some point, I mean, everything brought up to the way it's supposed to be, but it's phase five, so it's not gonna happen for, you know, many, many years.
Yeah.
Possibly.
We're looking at that now, I think that's what we're looking at now, Tricia, we just see what areas-
Yeah, the board's gonna be looking at that, I mean, what the board is trying to do, or at least since Mr. Bangin has come and me, is not to exacerbate a situation that has created a whole bunch of problems for us. And, you know, all of Martha's Vineyard's on a tight tank, you know, several areas in, in Cape Cod are, that's reality, but I understand the financial challenges, but, but that's the problem, is that by allowing this, you're gonna open it up for the other ones to come in, as this gentleman just said, and, um, spaghetti lines are not healthy for our system, it's, we're caught between a rock and a hard place, but, um-
Well, I, I just, I do have a question, I understand exactly what you're saying though, but by looking at this, I see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven with an S on it, that, that means that there is already seven on sewer spaghetti lined, I'm assuming, and, um, why wouldn't those houses have done it already?
Done what, you mean tapped into the town, they have.
Correct, well, the ones without an S on them do not.
Oh, they have not, correct.
Right, now, I don't know, maybe they're getting rid of the cell, maybe they're, I don't know, they're, each, each individual situation.
I'm gonna presume that they probably have like a, um, a, what do you call it, not a cess, a cesspool, that predates nineteen ninety-four, when Title V came into existence, and so they probably haven't sold their home.
That's, that's what I'm saying, is we don't know the, the situations of those houses, but they could be up for sale, there could be an elderly person that, you know, the house might go on the market, I mean-
I know. The difficulty is, is that, whatever, the way I see it, is whatever we do here, then I see no reason why we shouldn't give it to the other people, which means we could have spaghetti lines all over that place, which means it's gonna be a huge mess, and I never thought of what Sean was saying, which is, obviously, if, if we grant one, then somebody could tap in to that same line, do they still come before us, or no, I don't know the answer to that one.
I think they just go before the Board of Health, and then they-
No, you still have to grant the tie-in, but all the infrastructure would already be laid, and you, they'd just be requesting the tie-in, not the laying of the pipe and everything, I mean, you still ultimately have to approve a connection, cause they're paying the fees.
Yeah, cause they're still connected.
The liability of what you're saying, that if something fails, who's gonna clean it, who's gonna fix it, um, but-
Well, it's the same with this, at somebody's septic system, we go after them.
It's a little difficult.
But these are on public property, though.
Doesn't matter, they have, they have ownership of the, of the line. You're essentially giving them an easement to go through, you know, the layout, to get to the manhole.
Alright, so basically the clay is such that you can't, you can't even put a mounded system in?
No.
Above ground?
The soil is too hard, right?
I was only thinking of excavated and put soil in.
The, the innovative systems have a limit, a ninety minutes an inch.
Yeah, I know the soil's pretty bad at, in that area, firsthand.
You should remember this when we're having the sewer phase discussed.
I'm, I know, that's why I'm looking at it going, you know, this seems, makes sense.
I mean, if this is all spaghetti lines, it's sort of looking at, yeah.
It's almost like Anvino was a mess.
Right.
I don't know.
Well, it's up to the board, whatever, whatever you think, I think just by granting this, like you said, we have others that, you know, will soon follow. The other thing is, you know, at some point, you know, sewer system's gonna, you know, reach its capacity, and then we're gonna be saying no to people that have been in their homes for a long time, this person swoops in, buys his house, and gets a tie-in right away.
Well, I think, um, at the point where your agreement says you have to start saying no, there's still an out at that point for emergencies, but you still have to determine what that is.
Is there any limit they can, is, what, how many bedrooms are currently in this house now?
Two.
I don't know.
Two, three?
There are three in that house.
The record says two, but- So in other words, when, once they tie in though, there's no prohibition on expansion of bedrooms, right?
Not unless you put something on it.
To, Jennifer, you said a developer bought the house, is the house gonna be remained, or is it gonna be gutted and rebuilt?
It's legally a two-bedroom, just so everybody knows.
It's gonna be rebuilt?
Yes.
So presumably, how big's the lot, is it gonna be a four-bedroom home? Three?
Just in two bedrooms.
One second, Phil, one second, Tricia, will you do it?
Yeah, it's just, I know in the past when the boards have looked at spaghetti lines, we looked at, we had elderly couples and financial hardship and stuff like this, where this is a developer that's gonna rebuild and enhance the value of the property, which is good for the town, but
Right.
Which will, you know, is bigger, the, the outflow is gonna be increased from what's there now as well.
But, you know, we've had a lot of people who've done connections, and then they've expanded too, so, it's, this probably won't, this'll probably be it for that house.
It's advertised as a two-bedroom, but I don't know if that's-
Four rooms, two plus two bedrooms, one bedroom.
Phil, do you wanna-
Well, even if, if we had to design a system, we would have to, um, the minimum design is supposed to be three.
Right.
Unless there's a special deed restriction on it.
Is it three plus one, or just two plus one, when you, oh, you're saying, if it's two, it's, it's plus the one, you're right, it's three, as you're saying, I'm with you.
Has to be three now into the new Title V.
Yeah, it's always the plus one, I'm with you.
Alright, what's the-
Well, I don't know, I know, I, I know I voted for the other lines in the past, and usually it's the urgency, I think the problem that I run into is, is that usually we try to do it for the benefit of the elderly or, or hardship situation. The difficulty is usually, they end up selling it and flipping it after we voted it. This case, it's already been sold, somebody's gonna buy it, approve the property, they got a problem, it's either we do a tight tank, or we put them on sewer through a spaghetti line.
Or to prove the prob-
It's not, either choice is not a good, it's not the preferred, that I would prefer, but, um, I know tight tanks are terrible, I know, I, I don't, I don't agree with tight tanks unless it's opti, it's absolutely necessary.
I just think it might be a temporary solution, because I think, you know, something needs to be done on the street correctly.
There's that many homes.
You know, so, I mean, maybe this, uh, one second, Phil, uh, you know, maybe this, we'll bring this street up to the, uh, top of the list, you know, with sewer. Phil?
Yeah, what, what they can do is, you know, instead of inch and a half line, put a two-inch line, if you take all those five houses, if they wanna all tie in, they don't have to all go to that manhole.
Right.
And that way, you won't have to worry about putting in-
A bunch of lines, right.
A bunch of lines, just that one line, and they all tie in, you have one line, makes a two-inch line, um, and go about it, set inch and a half.
I mean, the good thing about this is that it's, I mean, you've seen requests where they're snaking through three or four backyards with easements from all the neighbors, this is almost as Jennifer said.
As good as it can get.
Highly in the right, as good as, I mean, it's a clear shot as opposed to what we've seen in the past.
Alright, I'll, uh, if there's, isn't any more discussion, I'll accept a motion, I guess, if everyone-
I'll move to approve an emergency sewer connection for parcel ID thirty-nine dash twenty-two dash double oh-three, dash F, providing they put a two-inch pipe, um, on Park Ave to the sewer main, on Maple.
Motion in a second, second, gonna motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Mr.-
Thank you, guys. Page ninety-one, did you say, Tricia?
Yes, sir.
Next is a presentation, let's see if I have this right, yeah, the school building committee update, and, uh, John, thank you for coming in.
Thank you for having us.
We do appreciate it.
John and, uh, engineers and architects have, I don't, I don't wanna steal your show here, but this is your fifth, sixth time presenting these, uh, final four projects, you guys are, spend a lot of time on this, Rich Heber's been there, and, and many, and many others.
Yep, it's been a long process, and the feasibility study is, is coming to a conclusion, and we're getting to the point now where we're going to have to select one of our alternatives to move forward to MSBA, to hopefully get into the schematic design phase. So we're here tonight, two purposes, one, to give you a very brief update, and we've been before you before, and this is just, again, a quick update on, on kind of the alternatives, answer any questions you might have, and also, you know, get your, your general consensus or ideas on what, you know, where you think, uh, this should be heading, we're, we're getting as much public feedback as we can before we make a decision that will likely come before the school committee on June ninth, so, we only have a few weeks left. What you see up here on the screen is the idealized plan, um, this be, this came out of our visioning work that started back in June, it was forty-five, uh, people who participated in that visioning, we had an educational planner who worked with us, Dr. Frank Locker, on developing a vision for the future of the Cituad Public Schools, and so, out of that vision came the idealized educational plan for twenty-first century school. So that's essentially what you see up here on the screen, and just briefly touching on a few of these elements, um, first of all, this is a six through eight, uh, middle school, currently gates is grade seven and eight, our idealized model is for a six through eight middle school, uh, to the left, and this would be a two-story option, I should say, so on the left side would likely be the sixth grade, um, team stacked on top of one another, so you'd have one on the first floor, one on the second grade, sixth grade being slightly separated from grade seven and eight. In this model, what you see is you see, uh, basically pods of classrooms, where you would have, um, essentially all of the specials that would be related to a team, such as art, or robotics and engineering, integrated among the teams, so those red areas that you see are, are typically what we refer to as specials, the blue areas are traditional, more traditional classrooms, the sort of light pink areas are special education, and what, what you get out of this model is that what we're trying to accomplish is the full integration of all, all of the, um, major academic areas and specials into one common core. The, the future being that, that no subject is taught in isolation, that there's, they're taught in collaboration with one another, and students see the relationship between one subject and another, it's true twenty-first century visionary planning, and so that's what, that's what our model is, so you see that, you know, elongated, um, stretch there, you've got six and, then seven and eight, um, again, replicating itself, that same design. In the middle, a couple of things to point out, uh, you have the, um, Hellerup stairs, uh, that's a stair that would go to the second floor, but also it served the dual purpose of being a performance area, those stairs you can actually sit on, um, there is areas where you climb up, but it's also like stadium seating, so you could have presentations and performances, um, down below that area, that is a sort of, again, a new sort of visionary model in education, trying to take advantage of space, a very big space that you could use in multi-purpose ways, and so that's what's called a Hellerup stair, so that's what we propose for the middle of the building. You also see, in the front, you see the gymnasium, the locker rooms, administration, the kitchen, a general cafeteria would be all up and around that Hellerup stairs, um, the public areas, as we call them, could be closed off from the other educational areas, so, you know, for public use purposes, that general central area, uh, could serve the public as well, even while school is in session, you have the ability to sort of close off sections of this building. The whole goal was to make it as adaptable and flexible as we could, you build a building, we're trying to build a building, not necessarily for today, certainly not for yesterday, but for fifty years in the future, and to try to be able to adapt to education over fifty years is a real challenge. That's the challenge we've put before the architects, they listened to our vision, they listened to our educational plan, and then they turned around and tried to translate that into designs on three sites that we're looking at. The current gate site, including the Gates building itself, cause we have to look at an addition renovation option, we are required to do that, so that had to be one of the options, uh, we're, we're gonna show you the new, uh, gates, uh, on Gate site, but a brand-new building, which would mean the demolition of the existing Gates School. We'll also show you a co-located model, which attaches the new middle school to the high school, and actually use some of the high school space as part of the middle school, sort of efficiencies in that regard, and finally, we'll show you, um, the plan on the Ellis site as well, actually located with a potential, um, public safety complex, so I'm gonna turn it over to, um, Don Walter from Dorn Whittier, and he will sort of walk you through the four options.
Great. Before, Don, before you start, can I just ask a quick question?
Yeah, right.
What areas are shared through the students, six, seven, and eight, is it all but the blue?
Well, again, in six, they're, they're set up in teams, so number one, you would primarily stay within your, your team pod, so, um, if you are a seventh grader, where Don is right now, as a seventh grader, hopefully much of what you would need would be right in that pod. Above you would be another seventh grade team, and you potentially would share with them as well, so an up and down kind of format, as far as those central areas, the gymnas- As far as those central areas, the gymnasium, the, the, you know, the band and chorus, which we didn't talk much about, would be a black box theater. That area would be shared by all of the students. So, all of the students essentially would be, you know, going in and out of that central core area is what you would say. Okay?
Alright, thank you, sorry.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Don.
Great, thanks, John. So, essentially what we've done is we've taken thirteen options and whittled them down to four semifinalists, which will ultimately be voted on and presented to the MSBA. So, we're going to start with the Gate site and start with the addition renovations option. As a way of orienting you to the site, First Parish Road and Cudworth here. This is the existing loop that comes to the front of the building in the main entrance located here. The way our colors are set up is the orange would be existing to be renovated, blue would be new. Based upon this drawing, there's not a much existing left to be renovated in the addition renovation option. We looked at a number of different approaches and what we found, because of all of the, the levels within that building, because it was originally built as a high school, which became a junior high, is now running a middle school model, that it wasn't feasible to renovate the Gates building to make it a twenty-first century school that John just described. So, what we've done is we, we're saving the iconic main entrance to the building that everyone knows in terms of its imagery and we're saving the nine thousand square foot gymnasium, which is three thousand square feet larger than what MSBA would allow with their, their standards that we need to follow. So, in this case, we, we get the benefit of the, the building's imagery and the large gymnasium. Beyond that, what we've done is we've set up these learning commons, as John just talked about in the idealized plan, with sixth grade being somewhat separate from the seventh and eighth grade and then all of the specials, your arts, your music, your robotics, all being intermingled within those pieces and the cafeteria and the library located just beyond. The way the site works, the buses would actually come in, the, the main entrance, and utilize this loop. We would close off this little spur row, which takes you down to what has become Five Corners, which is kind of a dangerous intersection, and just dedicate this to buses coming and going. We would take and allow the parents to come in off of Cudworth and loop around this way and back out. And you can see the primary parking for the school would be located out back also. So, you have a main entrance for the bus in the front and a secondary entrance for the students to get dropped off in the back, coming around a, a central lobby. Also, within this particular option, what we've done is we've taken what's located down here, the Little Red Schoolhouse, and we've relocated it back up to First Parish Road. Our understanding is that it was originally located up there and then moved to the back of the site. We're actually meeting with the Historic Commission on the twenty-eighth to discuss that as a possibility, but the initial feedback is that it might be a positive to the project. You can see we end up with one large athletic field and we maintain, actually rebuild and recreate the, the tennis courts on the site here. And lastly, kind of a hallmark of all of the options is we're trying to create indoor/outdoor classroom environments. So, outside each of the learning communities or learning commons, we've created an outdoor space, which is still somewhat protected, but allows the students to spill out onto the site and beyond. So, that gives you a sense of the addition renovation option. We can take questions now, we can just keep moving and whatever your pleasure is.
I just have one quick question, Don, if I may.
Sure.
The new part in the upper right-hand quadrant, the yellow, do you know approximately how much square footage that is?
The existing gym.
That's the gym.
Is that the gym?
That's the existing gym.
Oh, I'm looking at the other way, okay.
Yep, this is the existing gym.
So, so then take me across to the, the left, the furthest most to that, I guess it would be, yeah, right there. Approximately how much square footage is that?
The existing A-wing?
Is that part of the, no, no, right there.
Just, just this piece here?
Yeah.
Uh, gosh, enough talk to our head for this, a couple thousand square feet?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's all new construction.
Right, I understand that.
It's probably about a couple thousand square feet.
Couple thousand, okay, thank you.
Can I just? So, the question I had asked at the last meeting was what would be least disruptive to the students? Obviously, this would be
This is the most disruptive.
Without a doubt. Any, any ideas what you'd do?
Yeah, this would probably have to be a phasing. You'd probably look at building sections of this, moving students in, tearing down another section, building another. This is probably the most complicated in terms of phasing that we would phase. Probably would be a three to five-year project, disruptive to education and a real challenge. We don't have a place to put all of our, our students. So, you really have no other, no other building in town where we can move our students and continue education and not hurt the existing education for those seventh and eighth graders.
I just, I knew the answer, but I just had, I wanted to hear you say it publicly.
It's a great question. I, I should have brought that up. In terms of the way it may be constructed, anyone familiar with the building knows that this is A-wing, which comes off the back where students get dropped off. C-wing, which is what reaches out to the front, that one-story piece, then, then B-wing in the middle. We would probably be able to build this wing first, move the A-wing students perhaps into that and then come back and build that and then move these students back into, into there and so forth. So, you know, pretty disruptive construction, as John mentioned. It certainly adds time and time adds money. So, great, great question. Okay, the new option on the, on the existing Gate site, if you remember, we're just looking at where the existing building is located, the gymnasium. Existing gym is located right about here. This is essentially the idealized plan that you, that you saw first up on the screen, rotated ninety degrees with the sixth grade commons, seventh grade and eighth grade located along the, the back, essentially running down this side property line back towards the Little League Field in the back corner. And then all of the, the shared, the, the gymnasium, administration, kitchen, cafeteria, all located on this, this wing here with, in this case, the parents coming in off of First Parish, dropping off and looping back out, coming in a main entrance here. Buses coming in off of Cudworth, looping around and back out, students coming in on this lower part of the plan, gathering in the, in the center. With this option, because we don't know what the disposition may be of the Historic Commission, we've left the Little Red Schoolhouse in its current location. When you do that, as you can see, you, you lose those tennis courts that we showed on the previous option and end up essentially just with a multi-purpose field and perhaps a basketball court or two. If we were able to relocate the Little Red Schoolhouse up to this end of the site or somewhere along First Parish, we could recapture some of those tennis courts that we showed on the, on that initial option. So, that's, that's the new option on the Gate site. Much less disruptive, still construction going on. Essentially what we could do, because this is, this wing is located essentially where the existing C-wing is, you can build two grades plus all of the core facilities as part of a Phase One, move the seventh and eighth grade into the building and then tear down the existing building and build this, this last wing and then ultimately move the sixth grade into the building.
So, it would take a little while to get the sixth grade one, but ultimately less disruptive than the previous one.
Yep.
But you lose the character of the building, the whole building's gone.
Totally.
Unless we recreate it.
Unless you recreate in the design.
Yep, yes. So, that's the new on the existing site. Next option we go to is the Ellis Estate site and as you know, there are twenty-two acres that the school department, school committee controls, located on the corner of Route three A and Manlot Road. The other building that you see here in site development is six of those acres the Public Safety Project has been allowed to study as part of their, their work. So, we've shown what a public safety building would look like on that site also in conjunction with a new Gates Middle School building. Essentially the worst-case scenario, if you're talking about buildings in development on the site. The access to the new middle school would be off of Manlot Road, which in itself is, is a bit challenging given the, the narrowness of Manlot and the fact that there are no sidewalks out there. We expect there might be some development occurring on Manlot Road, at least from the entrance out to three A, perhaps down towards Countryway also. The way you access the site, again, from Manlot, parents would come in around, drop off at a main entrance here and loop back out. Buses would come in, drop off at a secondary entrance, loop around and come back out. Same thing, this is the ultimate idealized plan that John showed you to begin with, with main entrance and secondary entrance and the gathering space in the middle and then sixth grade common, second grade and eighth grade, all two stories with the outdoor learning environments going beyond. Multi-purpose field and a basketball court in this case. If public safety building were to go here, we are showing a wooded buffer to separate the two. There is also the possibility for development of some or all of this for more courts or something to that effect.
This one would require sewerage obviously brought up there. If the school was built there, we would have to have sewerage.
Yeah, there was, there was a separate sewer study that was done. The cost to bring it up there was just under two million dollars. We actually looked at doing onsite septic here also, but because of the population, it would actually be a sewage treatment plant. So, the cost of the development of the plant may even be more than the cost of bringing the sewer up and then you have your annual operating cost attached to that.
I don't think I've heard the question asked. If we went on this site, could you, would you entertain the idea of a model school?
Well, one of the, one of the issues right now with MSBA, and they've been very clear on this, is that model schools are not necessarily the favorite choice. If we are going to go to a model school, MSBA has told us, if that's our recommendation, that we will need to do a, they will do a further review of that, taking three to six months as another study to review whether in fact a model school is truly the best option for, for Situate. We're moving a little way, MSBA is moving a little bit away from the model school.
Yeah.
And understandably so and some of the reasons why they're doing that, but, you know, which I, I won't go into all of them, but in, in essence, model school is not off the table, but it's certainly not something that we're considering right now and quite frankly, our educational visioning, the model school wouldn't work for us. What we, the type of school we develop, that model school is outdated as far as we're concerned. So, we, we really do want to go in what we believe will be a model twenty-first century school, so.
Don, just to recap, you said this is the most difficult one to build?
No, uh, this, this site is actually the least disruptive to build on. Obviously, you are clearing a wooded area for it to occur and the cost of these, bringing the sewer up or an onsite sewage treatment plant would have to be incorporated.
How, how close are we to the house property line?
The, in terms of the, it's, yeah, it's, it's back here.
Considerably, yes, it's not.
Yeah, yep.
Yes. And another comment at, at one of your public forums a couple of meetings ago, when you had asked the audience to pick a favorite, did you say they had concerns about having the safety complex in the same area as the school? And I would think, and I would think that could be a positive thing, but they looked at it as a
Some people did. I mean, I think that's, that's a split, split decision. I think there are some people who look at having public safety on the same site as beneficial. I mean, I, I look at it from my perspective. I happen to like it there from a safety standpoint. I mean, I like it now that the public safety is out in front of the high school.
Right.
I mean, the response time is no better, you can't get any better than that if we need somebody in an emergency. So, from a safety standpoint, I actually, I favor that, but there are some people in our public sessions we've heard from that would prefer that maybe it not be there and that space be used more for fields and to expand field usage and, you know, saying there's a shortage of fields in Situate and maybe that would be a place where you could put some fields, maybe maintain a little bit more green space and not lose as, as many trees. So, you know, again, we've heard, we've heard mixed on that, but that has been out there as a, as a public concern.
One thing with the public safety also, when we first developed the option out here, working with the chiefs, the, the building itself was located coast, closer to the intersection of Manlot and through our study, we discovered that there is a wetland that has developed over time due to a stormwater drainage from Route three A located in this corner here and a smaller wetland here. I've had some just preliminary conversations with conservation and certainly we can't just do away with the wetlands, but especially this one, I think there's some leeway in mitigating and or replicating on the, on the site. And, and also, we did find more wetlands in this back corner than was originally shown on the MASTGIS maps.
Do you have a concern about the single entrance exit of it?
Yes, we, we actually, when we did the original plan, when public safety was located in the corner, we did have a, a separate egress coming out onto three A, either could be used as emergency egress or possibly bus egress. You know, it's interesting in, in developing the public safety plan, we're very concerned about that also when, when it pertains to the public coming to the building and there will be a community room and, and training opportunity. So, it's set up, so it's only one way in for the public and then egress out onto Manlot Road. The only individuals or personnel that will be egressing onto three A would be fire apparatus or police vehicles leaving the site. So, we're very cognizant of, of three A and trying not to create more egress points onto the road.
So, is there a reason then that you didn't make the entrance, the main entrance to the middle school through that? Where you have that multi-purpose field now, which would seem to provide, you know, not some of the challenges with the narrowness of Manlot?
It, it is something, if this became the preferred option, that we could study further. Part of the issue with the number, number of vehicles that come to the site in the morning especially is creating basically a, a turning situation, turning from the, turning left coming from the north, which there'd be fewer cars there, but there would still be some. Having that intersection essentially along with the Manlot intersection here, we're trying to minimize the number of intersections over a, a length of distance.
That's essentially what we have now though, right?
Yes, we do.
In this footprint, we have exactly that.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Yep.
Any option or opt, put it this way, looking to go down into the Ellis Estate itself to get to Countryway was another type of exit urgency or something? I don't know.
We suppose that, that is a possibility. That land is not in the, in the control of the school committee to look at right now, but certainly it's a possibility.
Because the first thing that popped into my head then was like, okay, can you get out through the recreational field? Now you've answered it, doesn't make sense. I'm like, it's like a bottleneck. Safety possibly, but bottleneck for traffic coming and going, it, it could be a problem. So, I'm trying to figure ways that you can maybe alleviate it.
Well, even if you had a second one to the, to the right of the first one.
Public safety.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, have like a dual going up in one way, that's another option.
Yep. Yeah, we, we, we could create a, a one-way in and a second way out.
But to Don's point, once you get out of a man lot, it's pretty narrow, that's for sure. And there'd be a lot of traffic.
And then waiting to turn on three A, obviously you'd need a light there.
Right.
Right, and there's some preliminary discussions that are going to be taking place between police and MASTOT about all of this. Okay?
Yep.
And then finally, this is smaller because the, the scale is smaller. We're trying to show you, show you more sight. This is the existing high school site. Again, to orient you, this is Route three A, the intersection of First Parish Road. We're right here in Town Hall, Fire Station Three and Police Station located here. High school main entrance off of Route three A, that secondary entrance where the buses are currently parked, located here off of First Parish. Again, blue is new, orange is, is renovated. In this case, we've introduced a purple color, which we'll explain here in a minute. The, the way we, we access the site and keep them, them separate, the buildings are, are joined, as you can see, they are connected, but they are substantially separate in terms of the way the buildings function. The, the middle school access would be off of First Parish with parents coming in, dropping off and going back out, parking being off to the right. Want to point out that the Kozlowski Courts, the inline skate and skate park and tennis courts are all untouched in this option. We're very cognizant of the importance of those, so those remain, remain as is. But when we do put this parking over here, the seaside playground would have to be relocated. So, that's your main entrance, parent drop off, main entrance to the middle school here. The other entrance for the buses and for the high school come off of three A. Buses queue up along this, this long path here with middle school students getting off and coming in this secondary entrance to a main gathering space, just like the other options. High school students getting off at their main entrance, buses going back out. The parking that's along this side of the building, opposite the auditorium entrance, gets relocated to the back of the site. There's the former physical plant, which right now is utilized as storage for the high school. That would get removed because the main boiler plant for the high school is actually now over here next to the Kobe Cutler Fitness Center. So, that, that parking replaces what would be lost in this, in this particular option. In terms of the building, as I said, this is, this is your main entrance with your sixth grade learning commons, seventh grade and eighth grade located across this portion of the building. All of your core facilities located in the blue in the middle. building. All of your core facilities located in the blue in the middle. This part of the building is actually some one-story construction in the high school right now. It's the art wing, old cafeteria A or senior caf in the, in the recreation department, located all down along this portion of the building. We are suggesting that that part get removed. The auditorium structure remain in place. All of the art function then would go into this purple area on the ground floor, which is currently the early childhood center, which is being relocated to the Wampatuck School this summer. So, they're able to take this program space and renovate this to become the art wing, which actually creates a better connection back to the rest of the, the high school. The existing auditorium, which right now is undersized, so it's 410 seats within there, would actually get renovated into a band and choral center. So, the floor be flattened, take advantage of the high ceilings, and you have a, basically a music suite set up for the middle school, but given its proximity, could be used by the high school also. But when you take the auditorium away, the added benefit is, we would suggest constructing a new 750-seat auditorium back adjacent to the entrance to the gymnasium, so you can have a shared lobby, and with all that additional parking, have better access to a, a public entity. So, it would be an auditorium with a stage, with a fly loft, things of that nature, for not just high school, middle school, but for community use also. So, that gives you a general sense of, of the middle school and of the other amenities that, that take place out there. Do want to point out the vernal pool, which is a topic of discussion, as you can imagine. What we're going to do is, is take that vernal pool and enhance it. Right now, it's mowed right up to the edge of the water, and when the water disappears in the summertime in the fall, actually gets mowed right through the vernal pool. What, and we've had initial discussions with Conservation Commission about creating a naturalized buffer around that vernal pool, and then, while it may be mowed, it wouldn't be an active recreational area around, outside that buffer. Those outdoor classrooms we mentioned, get a chance to spill out along what would be a, a pervious path, and perhaps a, a point where there can be a dock, or a place where students in the spring can get out and take water samples, observe egg masses, things of that nature. The other aspect of this that we're very cognizant of is, with conservation, they have allowed projects to be built up to 125 feet of the edge of a vernal pool. They have jurisdiction within 250 feet. Our building right now is in excess of the 125 feet here, so we would stay outside of that, that buffer. And I think it's fair to say that the conservation was very interested in this plan, because we're actually making a situation around the vernal pool now better in the future with this particular project. And from an educational point of view, we're not only allowing students to be outside, but to give them a chance to be in, in a, a naturalized environment, and they can have some hands-on learning.
Couple other things from this plan you get, is you get the flexibility and adaptability to changing enrollments over time. You get a lot more ability to expand into other areas if you needed them. So, if the high school got a little bigger, or if the middle school got a little bigger over time, you have much greater flexibility here than you do on any of the other plans. The other thing you get is obviously the ability, if you wanted it, to share staff, economies of scale there in sharing staff where you need that. Students who, particularly gifted students at Gates who needed to take advantage of courses maybe at the high school, let's say you get an eighth grader, basically, you know, beyond the math that's offered in eighth grade, conceivably, very easily could, could plop them into a ninth or 10th grade math course. So, you could take advantage of that. You could take advantage of the mentoring opportunities of high school students with younger students. So, so from an educational standpoint, this co-located model offers you some things that the other, the other three do not offer. So, and you still get pretty much the idealized educational plan.
I think that's most important. What's best for the students is really, drives it home. The only question I have is, will you do a traffic study? I was talking to my wife about it, and she just said, oh my God, the traffic's going, you know. So, you'll look at it further and try to open it up and...
Yes, we actually had a data collection agency out at the beginning of May, doing sampling to, to document the existing traffic, and we should in the next week or so have a, an initial report back from our traffic engineer. But that was one of our concerns as well.
All three of these sites, interesting, present some traffic challenges. Even the existing Gate site with that intersection that we, we talked about, has some interesting traffic challenges. This one will, so we really have to study this carefully in terms of the traffic, as well as the Manlot 3A site presents some traffic challenges for us.
Don, in the circular area, is that void right now in, behind the purple there?
That's the courtyard.
This right here?
Yeah.
Yes, that's, that's an outdoor courtyard.
Yeah.
That's where the ducks live.
Where the ducks live.
Ducks give birth every year there.
Any chance of using that space?
The problem is, if you did, you'd be taking outside walls from existing classrooms and closing them in. And what we want to do is keep that natural light in, in the classrooms.
John raised a good point. If I can go up a little bit further, right? If you want, that, that corridor's on the outside wall, and you could bump into that area.
Right, that's cafeteria.
No, that, right, see that, the, the little bump out down below here, that's the cable televisions.
Oh, right, 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 right.
That, that corridor, interestingly, has no classrooms on one side. So, it's a second, it's a two-story corridor with only classrooms on one side. If you ever had to expand the high school, let's say, you could easily add eight class, 18 classrooms up in that area, two-story, very inexpensively to do. So, you know, this, again, that talks about the flexibility of this, this design, that you have the ability to, to do things within the high school site that you don't have on the others. So, you know, again, flexible, adaptable, changing with the times. This one, this one gives you something the other, the other three do not.
I guess my only concern, similar to Sean, I mean, we just added 750 people in an area that's already congested. If you drop off your kid there at seven in the morning now, you know, it seems like it's going to be, it seems like ideally, the part of the plan that will work the best is to get rid of Town Hall, the fire and the police station.
Right.
That really opens up that extra space where you can use more parking, more road access, more fields, more of that sort of stuff. It seems congested to me.
But if you did, to your point, Tony, and we've talked about this, and obviously, we have to show it because it's the existing conditions. But if, if for some reason they weren't there, if Town Hall did move to the, the former gates in this plan, if, if the, the public safety moved up to Ellis site, you know, you, that opens up, you know, a tremendous area to be used, both to improve traffic flow, to put fields in. We've looked at the possibility that two fields could go there. The softball field that can't be built in this scenario could be built in that scenario. So, it does, it does, you know, for the future planning, for the master planning of this, there are opportunities. And the other thing, just from the sightlines of, you know, that 3A intersection with First Parish, you know, you'd have a beautiful, brand-new school sort of, you know, the thing you would see over an expansive green in that scenario. Be a really attractive, you know, sort of piece for Situate to see. So.
And Don, there's nothing you can do about that vernal pool?
We can, we can enhance it.
There's nothing you can do.
You know, it was certainly, it was certainly originally constructed as stormwater detention way, way back when. And like what happens with many of these, if they're not maintained, over time, they get naturalized and they become a habitat. In this case, it's a very vibrant habitat.
And so, we're trying to, we're trying to enhance it to turn it into a positive instead of a negative. So, that's why it's almost like a nature's classroom for us.
All right. Mike, did you have your hand up? I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
Well, I just wondered, you talking about as far as the future and, and what would happen with the building we're in now, and fire and police, and because as presented, this plan actually decreases the, the athletic fields that are, are in existence, because we lose the field right behind us. So, obviously, there are pluses and minuses with all of these plans, but this would be, in my view, a big plus, only if we could work towards putting, eliminating these three buildings and the cell tower, and moving the cell tower, and turning this into an attractive entrance to the town. Fields, it would, it would mean a lot, but it's, it's contingent upon a lot of moving pieces in the future. So, that, that's something that has to be considered, in my view.
Tricia, one of the last meetings, I promised him would move the cell tower. So, I hope that's okay.
Piece of cake.
I just was going to make one, one last comment. The only thing I could figure that I'd like to add is, and that's probably, we can gain a lot, and I'm sure you together visited other schools, to see what worked for other towns and what didn't work. And I'm sure that's what, everyone's nodding their head, and that's what you're taking back to us. And that, I appreciate that. Let's learn from their mistakes. And you would showed a lot of, John, that maybe you and Sarah had gone up to California.
We were out in California, but just Friday, we were at, we were in Concord, New Hampshire, and we were looking at schools that were built there. And so, you know, we are learning from, these are school buildings that were two years old, and they were using a lot of the concepts that we're talking about here in our plan. And, you know, just learning how they're using space and, you know, in the different ways, and it was really interesting. And again, learn from them and some of their mistakes and things that, you know, didn't work.
Like you said tonight, the model school, I thought that was great, you know, a month ago, but maybe it's not so great.
Maybe not so at this point. And, and you know, and again, and we originally went to MSBA, thought we would go model, probably more likely go model, because so many other schools were being built as models.
Right.
When we did the visioning process, you know, I can honestly say right now, the model doesn't fit our vision, you know, and so it probably wouldn't have worked for us anyways. But you're not seeing, you're not seeing a lot of new model schools. In other words, model schools breaking ground right now.
And what, in the very beginning of the discussions back last June, you had said something that hit home, and I don't, you know, I don't want to repeat it because I'll mess it up. You developed the school from the education out. So, what was the...
Basically, the, you know, the whole notion is, you develop the educational plan first, and then design a building to fit the educational plan, rather than trying to fit an educational plan in a existing building. And that's our challenge with the current gates right now, is trying to fit an existing, a plan, educational plan, that doesn't work in that building. And so, you know, we, we need a building that can adapt to that plan over a period of time.
Great. Anyone else have any comments?
The only thing I, I had was, one was, so, in this model here, there's a potential you're going to have 11, 12-year-olds in connection with 18, 19-year-olds all in the facility.
Right, absolutely.
I just, I know that's for the school board to look at that. It just strikes me odd and strange that I'd have my young daughter or my son at a high school where, you know, they're going to be seniors. And that's, that's, I know they're going to be separate and everything, but to me, it's a little different than having a sixth grader with a four, five, or a five-year-old in kindergarten. That's all the difference.
Well, I'll tell you from an educational standpoint, because I get that question a lot. I've been in this business 30 years. I've worked in campus situations where a middle school is basically almost without being attached, is right next to an existing high school, where kids ride on the same buses. It is, it works exceptionally well to put those kids together. There are so many more positives than there are negatives in terms of the mentoring that goes on, and the opportunities. For potential negatives that people could be concerned about just really don't exist. Duxbury is opening in September, a new co-located middle high school attached. Cohasset is then seven through 12 for a number of years in one building. Rockland just connected their middle school, five through, five through 12 with, together. And Abington is rolling out a plan for five through 12 co-located middle high school right now. They're about six months ahead of us. So, it's, it's a, it's an educational model for the future. And again, for the concerns that parents may have about the mixing, they are kept pretty separate, they are safe, and again, the, I would say, the advantages of the plan far outweigh some of the potential risks, which generally don't play out to everybody's fears.
That, that's a very common statement. And Rich, you're about to jump out of your chair. Well, you know, how many years have you taught in this school system? And, and you know, if you have something to say, say it along that point.
John hadn't said it, I was going to talk about all the communities in the area that are going to the, I mean, Cohasset's had it for years and years and years.
And the important thing is, it, it works, and it works.
It does work, and it's, you know, and kids are safe, and we do everything in, you know, in our power to keep kids safe. And so, it's, but I, I understand the risk, obviously, because, you know, I was a parent too of teenagers, so I get it. But it's a, they'll be safe. And again, the, the opportunities that these kids would have in this model would far outweigh the disadvantages, in my opinion.
I'm going to just go to Marty and...
Just a quick question, John. So, as far as the buses running?
Yeah.
Is, is it going to be, will the ages be mixed on the buses as well?
Yep, they will be. Yeah, we're planning to do that anyways. We're, we're moving towards a two-tiered bus system.
I had heard that.
So, next year, they're going to be mixed. So, we're already starting the process. We won't have sixth graders on the bus, because obviously, seventh grade begins at Gates. And, you know, and most buses, quite frankly, don't have kids above 10th grade. It's mostly ninth gr, mostly seventh, eighth, and ninth graders that'll be on buses. Ten, some 10th, a few 11th and 12th. But those buses, and again, having worked in systems more often than not where the kids will combine, I was in Duxbury for a number of years, they were six through 12 combined on the same buses. Less problems on those buses than you get on a middle school bus, guaranteed.
Thank you. Interesting.
Yeah, it's, it's because the, it's, it's a different culture.
Right.
When the eighth graders are the oldest people on the bus, it is a different culture. When there's high school students on the bus, and the eighth graders are sitting in the front, and they're, high school students are sleeping in the back, it's a different culture.
Better than you.
It is a different culture.
Great. Everyone, everyone all set? Does that wrap it up? I don't want to cut you short, Don.
Yeah, we did everything we wanted to do.
Hey, Robin, I'm sorry, you had your hand up?
No, no, I just, I just wanted to add that we've had preschoolers in with the high schoolers for many years now, and that's far less you can get in this whole system. So, in not having issues there, I think, I think we'll be okay.
Our, our high school kids are great. I mean, they really are. Our culture of our high school is phenomenal, and I wouldn't say this is a problem.
And I would be very excited. As John said, the mentoring, the tutoring, they could go on. I think there could be a real nice relationship built between the two.
And we've looked at that area.
Children are incredibly adaptable. I think parents...
More so than we think.
Yes, we have more difficulty with change than a young person does, that's for sure.
A lot of good comments. Some more here about it.
Yes.
Do this thing, do this thing, man.
Jim, do you have a question?
Yeah, with this plan, how would you, if you were in the junior high school, how would you get from the junior high school to the high school without going outside?
Well, there would be connectors that, again, would be ways that people would, would egress either way, but you would, those wouldn't be necessarily pathways that students would go down. If you were, if you were to see the, the Rockland school, because we visited Rockland, they're connected. So, there's, if you need to go into the high school, you can connect and go in. But for the most time, the students stay separate from one another.
Yeah, I understand. Would they have like a hanger upstairs?
There'd be, there'd be ways in and out, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate all your time. And like I said, every time I see it, I pick up a few new things.
There you go.
I appreciate it.
Am I missing something, John? No, no, that's good. I was just going to make a point. I just want to say to Mike Hayes, I know you're stepping off the board for all those years of service and new election. I just want to think the board recognizes you and say thank you very much for that dedication for the town of Situate and the school committee. So, I just want to make sure you recognize yourself.
And he's staying on the school building committee too, so we're not letting him off.
Good, good. Thank you. Thank, thank everyone for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
I don't have any backup for the next thing. The next is a discussion and vote for a new contract for the 2015 revaluations. And Todd, thanks for being so patient.
Oh, that was interesting.
Your children, your children in the system?
Oh, yeah, sure do.
Todd, I don't have much backup here, because it's black.
Black ink.
So...
Can we get into the distinction between the business valuation and, can we get into the business valuation and commercial and talk, explain us maybe?
In detail?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we can give, you know, half an hour. Is that, well, is that enough time, John?
I got an hour if you want. I got it right here.
John's, he just shut it off.
Mine, the battery died.
Thank you.
Does that work? All right.
We'll get there.
You share with them, I'll share with them.
All right. Todd, could you give us a little backup, if you don't mind?
Yeah, sure. Todd Gluck with the Board of Assessors. Unfortunately, neither of the Steves or Freds can be here tonight, so you're stuck with just me. We had a proposal put out for appraisal services to conduct the update of all residential, commercial, industrial, mixed-use, exempt, and business personal property values for Situate in fiscal year 2015. The DOR requires us to do this. It's all part of our work plan. So, this is something that we... So this is something that we just need to do. General laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and rules and regulations of Commissioner Revenue.
How often, Todd?
Uh, every two or three years. Uh, last time we did it was 2009, 2012. We used the same company that we were recommending. We use this time, PK Valuation Group. They scored very highly on all of our criterias. Uh, like I said, we've used them previously. We like them. They are a powerhouse on the Cape, covering 11 of the 15 communities on Cape Cod. This is a major reason why we chose them in 2005. So the Board of Assessors would recommend that we grant the contract to PK Valuation Group. I have a list of some of the things that they will do in the contract with us. I'll just list those off. The contractor will conduct field review inspections of all sales, residential, and commercial, build new cost tables for all improved parcels, build new land schedules, neighborhood values for all parcels, perform market analysis, including water influence studies, value trends, and area analysis, conduct income and expense analysis for all commercial and industrial properties, value all telecom accounts, participates in new growth data collection, conducts recollection of improved exempt parcels per DOR directive, and participate, uh, in the certification process with the DOR field rep. DOR will visit the town on October 7th through the 11th. And they will also provide all DOR spreadsheet database reports required for our town certification.
How many proposals did you have, Todd?
I believe we had two in. Uh, one of the problems is using another vendor. You have to take on their software, and it's a, it's an incurred cost of about $75,000 extra, I believe. Just for the conversion.
So what's the, what's the charge for?
I believe it's, yeah, 70, 71 something?
71,800.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, recognizing that we've used them for the past, since 2005, I think you said?
Um, I assume the, the assessors will take a look to see whether or not
it would make sense to maybe switch at some point in the future, given the fact that, granted, we're using them because we have their software.
Yeah.
They kinda suck you in, and now you're stuck. You know, it's kinda like having an Apple or a, uh,
Yeah.
Word or something, and say, I can't go to Apple, because all my computers are word-oriented.
PK Valuation is very good on coastal communities too, and that's why we chose them in the beginning. And all these communities are still using them. So if something changed, we would definitely consider.
Motion? Please, if we're all set.
Move to grant the fiscal year 2015 revaluation contract to PK Valuation Group for the amount of $71,800.
Second?
Motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone. Next is a discussion and a vote for a general obligation bond anticipation note.
Hello.
Pam, how are you?
I heard you had some good news tonight.
I have great news. And I'm gonna boast about this great news for the Towne Situate. But, um, I'm gonna go off my memorandum for now. So, um, the town was, um, going to borrow $8,300,000 for various projects. Um, stu- school security and technology, uh, $150,000 for both of those. Roads, $400,000. Ladder truck, $400,000. So those were all general fund borrowings. And then we had two borrowings for, um, the Water Enterprise Fund, which is water pipe replacement for $400,000, and water pipe improvements, um, for $6,800,000. So, um, to get ready for this borrowing, since it was a, a substantial amount of money, our financial advisors thought that we should have a Standard and Poor's rating again. So Nancy, uh, Tricia, and myself prepared a presentation. And we met with, um, Standard and Poor's on May 6th. And we had a, a phone conversation with them. And I believe you guys all got the handout for what was presented to Standard and Poor's. And they came back with a short-term borrowing rate of plus one, which is the highest short-term borrowing rate that they give out. And again, they affirmed our long-term borrowing rate of double A-plus. So we were thrilled with the results. Um, I think Situate has a great financial team. And, um, I know the three of us are really proud. So, uh, it went out to bid and, um, to the, uh, for the $8.3 million. And, uh, the town received three bids, and the winning bid was Mitsubishi Securities. At a coupon rate of 0.75%, in a premium, we received a premium of $17,679. And at the end of all this, we only have to pay back $20,000 and change. So I wanna put this in perspective. We are borrowing $8.3 million. They gave us another $17,000 and change for premium. So that'll cover our issuance costs. And at the end of it, we only have to pay back 20. So we're pretty much getting free money, right, for three months. I mean, that's huge. Our financial advisors couldn't believe that they came out with this rate. Uh, everybody was floored. I questioned it several times, because I thought something was wrong somewhere. I mean, we are ba- barely paying over $2,000 for $8.3 million.
Do you think we could continue this if we, you know, the project for the gate school?
Well, we're lucky because, well, this was a short-term borrowing. But we're lucky because we still have our, our long-term borrowing rate of double A-plus. So we're gonna go out, we'll have to roll this over, because this is only for 90 days. So we'll roll this into the bigger borrowing when we go out for the library, the school, or whatever should come up come September. Um, so, but we'll, uh, we've already gone through the Standard and Poor's price, process, so we won't have to do that part again. I mean, I, I see Situate as just great. I mean, we're in a really good shape.
How did, how did, how did we get there?
I'm so excited.
How did we get there, Pierre?
Good leadership, Sean.
Well, that's all right. You said it, Tony. Thank you. No, obviously not. These three right here.
I think that we have a good financial team. I think that all of Town Hall deserves a big pat on the back. It's not just the financial team. I think we all work really good together, and this is-
They've made good decisions over the last-
Right. I think Tricia's made a lot-
Five, six years and-
A lot of different decisions. I think Nancy coming in, you know, has been great, and myself too.
Do you think you could add a zero to that and maybe borrow 80 million? We could plop it in a CD and make a little bit of money over there?
I'm telling, I, I, I don't think anything gets better than this. I mean, this is great. This is great news.
So when we start to, you know, talk about the new middle school and the public safety complex and stuff, the fact that we're able to, you know, hopefully sustain this kind with the bond rating and the interest rates will really, in the long term, save hundreds of thousands of dollars over 30 years for, um, our debt and, and tax rates.
And we had six. I mean, that was the winning bid. Of course, we take the lowest. But we had four others, I mean, five others, excuse me. And they were all great rates. Um, I mean, this one was decided on, you know, they gave us the most prem, you know, premium money, which is pretty much free money. I mean, not free, but, yeah, free. I mean, it's gonna pay all our issuance costs, and it's not gonna cost the town any money. I mean, I mean, how do you borrow 8.3 million for a little over two grand? Seriously? I'd like to borrow a couple million. Even I could pay that interest rate back. I mean, it's, I think Situate's come a long way. And I think it's a positive outlook for the future, for all these upcoming, you know, public safety buildings, school, library. I think it's great.
Save the town tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars, right?
Absolutely. I think we're definitely headed, they're up. Definitely up.
Motion?
Okay, I'm gonna read the motion one at a time.
Nancy, you have anything else you wanna add? I mean, this is-
No, I mean, how can you, um, not be happy with a note at nine basis points, like nine basis points? We're actually paying less than what we can already interest on in the bank, and that's so unusual currently.
Right. That's great. And that's why I wanted to, you know, hear from everyone. Thank you. We all thank you very much.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna read these motions one at a time. So, motion to approve the sale of an eight mil, $8,300,000, 0.75% general obligation bond anticipation note, the note of the town dated May 30th, 2014, and payable September 26th, 2014, to Mitsubishi UFJ Securities USA Incorporated, at power and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $17,679.
Second?
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion that in connection with the marketing and sale of the note, to preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated May 13th, 2014, and a final official statement dated May 20th, 2014, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted.
Second?
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That the town treasurer and the board of selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant events disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2-12, in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the note for the benefit of the holders of the note from time to time.
Second?
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That we authorize and direct the treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient. If such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the notes.
Second?
A motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Finally, that each member of the board of selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them, to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect to provisions of the foregoing votes.
Second?
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Good. Unanimous. Okay.
Just one quick thought, Pam. Do we have any debt that we're paying much higher interest on that we wanna?
Well, we, we have those two that I've brought up to you in the past, uh, that were done in 2005, that we're watching. Um, we, it's just not feasible to do it right now. Um, but when September comes up, that is something else we might roll into. You know, we're, we're watching it. We're keeping a close eye on it. But we're, it's, wasn't feasible at right now. So it's still hanging out there. We're not gonna, you know, we keep a close eye. So we'll keep, we'll keep on, keep on it.
Okay, well, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Appreciate it. Okay. Moving on, uh, there's a discussion and a vote for the town pier rehab contract with Coastal Marine Construction. Marx, patient here, Paul Scott.
Their town's a charm.
Exactly. Mark Anderson, the town master, uh, with Paul Scott, um, formerly of DPW. Now we're acting as a project manager for the rehabilitation of the commercial fish pier. Uh, I know that, I've been before you a couple of other times, uh, during this project for funding. We're now at a point where we're ready to award the contract. Um, the engineer plans went out to bid. They were open on January 23rd. Um, Child's Engineering, our engineer of record, has reviewed those bids and recommends the contract be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, Coastal Marine Construction, Incorporated, for $845,545.60. And we're here today to request the board of selectmen award that contract.
Any questions or comments?
No.
75% to a grant.
Our motion?
75% to the Waterways Enterprise Fund.
Yeah, between 75 and 80% of the projects being funded through a grant. The other 20 to 25% is coming from the Enterprise Fund, with nothing coming from the Towne Situate's general fund.
Excellent. That's what I wanted you to say.
25% of 845, we're responsible for.
But it's coming from-
From Waterways.
That's right. That's correct.
Not to the tax.
Okay.
I'm with the board of selectmen vote to award the contract for the town pier rehabilitation, contract number TPR-1-13, to Coastal Marine Construction LLC of Milton, Massachusetts, for total bid utilizing alternative number one of $845,545.60. That's $45.60, with payment to be made at the unit price and/or lump sum prices, pending receipt of a certificate of insurance, 100% performance bond, and 100% labor and materials bond.
I have a motion-
Second?
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Paul, did you wanna add anything? I, I'm sorry, you've been here for a while.
No, not really, other than, um, to, to let you know, that will become a construction site, so be closed to the general public. Uh, we will notify the various businesses in that area that might tend to use it. Uh, there is gonna be, Frank Maracci has been on board from the very beginning as the fisherman's liaison. So there's gonna be a situation where the only ones that are gonna be allowed on the pier would be the fishermen with their ice trucks and so forth. And that'll be a coordination part. Part of the contract is the contract that must designate a liaison with the fishermen, uh, with cell phones and emails and all of that. So, uh, that's our one concern right now, is being able to, uh, work with the fishermen and, and provide them with the access when they need it.
So many hurdles to, you know, jump through now. You know, anything else would be that much more difficult. When do you-
Dan, we will be closing it down to the public, the general public.
When does the project intend to start?
We're hoping around the, about the middle of June. And we haven't had a pre-construction yet, but we will within the next week or so.
How long will it go on for?
They have 120 days, four months.
Okay. All right.
And you have, it looks like you have a contingency.
Yes, we do.
If it runs over?
Yeah.
That's what that is, okay?
Small.
All right, okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Next is, uh, other business. I'll start with Marty, if you wanna go ahead.
I don't have anything to say there.
Okay.
Want to mention the thing yesterday?
Uh, Tony, other business.
Um, what's going on? Um, the one thing I just wanted to, to thank everybody that participated in the parade yesterday. The weather held off, and it ended up being beautiful. The, the veterans did a great job. The groundspeople did a great job. All the different organizations with Little League and Girl Scouts and the two bands. Um, it was really, really a good, good event and showed our community very well, and good speakers, and, um, you know, I'm very proud of it, and, and it felt like a very special day. I don't know, do you guys have?
I heard nothing but great, great things about everything, you know, from the, the chorus, I mean, the band, you know, from the junior high and high school, as well as the Girl Scouts. And it was just a lot of positive feedback.
All ages, yeah, really, when you think about it.
And considering the weather wasn't that good, it was a pretty good turnout, um, as well. Um, the, I guess, on the sporting front, it's, I feel it's my responsibility. Uh, um, baseball team made it to the playoffs, and they have a playoff game on the Cape on Friday. And the two lacrosse teams are in the playoffs. Uh, both of them are very highly seeded. The girls, I think, were number two seed, and the boys are number two. So they'll have some home games here in the next couple of days. And, um, there's just a lot going on as, as the school year comes to an end. And, um, also, you know, I, I think you, I saw a bunch of you guys there. Last week, one of the nicest events of the year at the school is they have the arts, what do they call it? The arts?
Spring for the eyes.
Spring for the arts. And they have it over at the high school, and they have the artwork from all of the different schools, all the different grades. And, uh, it was just a great event. And the choruses sing out on the common. And again, it was just, all kids are running around and playing and having hot dogs and stuff. And you get to walk through the school and see all these beautiful pieces of artwork. So everyone that put that together, that's a real special day as well. And then the only other thing I'll bring up is that it is actually election weekend. And that on the 31st, um, we're having an election. It's not a highly contested one, but there are a few positions that are out there for, um, that are contested. So I, um, suggest or ask that you all go vote and, and pick the candidates and show that you're involved in town government. The poll hours are from eight to five.
Right.
So it'll be at the high school. And, uh, get out there and find five minutes to go vote for your candidates.
Is that it, Tony?
That's it.
John?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. The only thing I had was, and I had seen it advertised in Cohasset, there's a hazardous waste collection day in Situate, at the highway department on May 31st.
It's at the dump. There's, at that-
There's a sign at the dump.
There's a big sign there.
All right, okay.
So what happens is, we're members of South Shore.
Right.
So, um, each month, the town hosts the hazardous waste collection.
Right.
So anybody from that town can go.
Right. Okay, and I just throw that out there, 'cause, you know, I'm sure, you know, a few paint cans and things like that.
Just wanna add to that, Sean, if you don't mind. Electronics, there's also a date, right? For electronics, it's a different date.
So 13th or the 14th? It's just-
For any electronics?
14th, I think. Electronics, yeah, at our transfer station.
Right.